Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. This is our Monday, September 12th, 2022 meeting. First order of business, if we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to start off by introducing the members of the Commission that are here this evening. To my immediate right is Jeff Cohen, a Commission member. Excuse me. To my far right is Jeff Cohen, a Commission member. To my immediate right is Jim Fitzsimmons, also a Commission member. Right next to me on my left is JP Vinoyt, who's the Vice Chairperson of the Commission. Next to JP is Steve Allinson, who is the Secretary of the Commission, also a Commission member. And to my far left is David Parent, who is an alternate on the Commission. At the staff table to the lower left is Cheryl Ann Tubby, who is our Recording Secretary. And next to Cheryl Ann is Kevin Poggiini, our Town Planner. I'm Jim Seik. There, I'm the Chairperson of the Commission. Our next order of business is consideration for approval of the minutes of the August 8th, 2022 meeting. Any Commission members with any questions, additions, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the August 8th, 2022 minutes of the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission.
And do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention?
Abstention. Mr. Allinson abstains. And before we get to our first order of business, I'd like to just make an announcement. Two items are not going to be heard this evening. First is, and they're both new business items. First is item number four on the agenda. It's a site plan warehouse, five research parkway, Wallingford LLC Research Parkway. No action on that this evening. And the second one is a site plan. It's also a warehouse for Mark Development LLC, 1107 Northrop Road. Also no action. Which brings us to our first order of business, which is a public hearing. It's a special permit for Dex Cheshire Crossing 2 HOA 1425 Tuttle Avenue. Mr. Allinson, if you please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record while the applicant prepares for his presentation at the table.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number 406-22, special permit for Cheshire Crossing 2 Homeowners Association, 1425 Tuttle Avenue, to increase deck sizes throughout an open space planned residential development. OSPRD. We have an interdepartmental referral. Date of receipt, August 8th. From our environmental planner. An interdepartmental referral, date of receipt, August 8th, from fire marshal. Interdepartmental referral from Water and Sewer Senior Engineer, date of receipt, August 8th. Interdepartmental referral, date of receipt, August 8th, from a town engineer. Correspondence from Kevin Poggiini to the Town Manager of Cheshire. Dated September 12th, 2022. And I believe that concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Allinson. And before I ask the applicant to introduce himself and begin his presentation, I guess, Mr. Poggiini, would you like to just explain or go over that last memo that Mr. Allinson noted for the record and give us some background on it, if you would, please?
Yeah, there was just a clerical oversight. The town of Cheshire was not notified of the application. I thought it had gone out, but it did not. So they did receive notification today, although it wasn't in time of the statutes. I spoke to Corporation Council, and due to the minor nature of the application, she doesn't feel as though the town would appeal the decision. But it's the applicant's purview to go forward if they would like. But she doesn't foresee them having any major issues due to the minor nature of the revision of the special permit.
Well, again, I appreciate the applicant would like to go forward. But I guess I'd just ask, you know, Commission members if they have any objection. I have none. Any Commission members have any objection? Seeing none, if the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
My name is Joe Ruberton.
Sir, I think you can probably pull that microphone out and bring it a little bit closer to you so they could pick you up on the speaker.
Is that better? My name is Joe Ruberton. I reside at 39 Wasworth Lane, obviously in Wallingford. I am here tonight because I'm interested in expanding my deck and volunteered to do some of the detailed work that is required to get the permission to do that. I'm accompanied tonight by the President and Treasurer of the Association, Mr. John Penwell, and the Vice President, Mr. Dave Lovato. The Cheshire Crossing 2 Homeowners Association is requesting a special permit to allow the 41 owners to reasonably expand their deck if desired. Many of the existing decks last functionability and usability. And in many cases, it depends totally on the lifestyle of the occupant of the building. The Cheshire Crossing 2 Homeowners Board voted to permit a rectangular expansion of the existing decks so that they would be no larger than 16 by 16. And the deck can be no longer, excuse me, no wider than the existing building structure so that you would not be able to see it from the private road that we exist on. Per the regulations, we resurveyed the property with Giuliano Associates, who actually did the original site plan. As seen on the plans, all 41 of the decks expanded to the maximum would reduce our open space area from 37.8 to 37.7 with the minimum open space requirement of 35.5, leaving us two plus acres of additional space. If granted, we would expect homeowners that wanted to expand to have to follow the rules in the condo document. This would include an architectural design that would match the development standards and the quality of the materials presently used at the facility. The homeowner would also need to file a variance request form with the Covenant Committee of the Association, as well as the management company, that variance request form would need to include architectural plans, a neighbor sign-off, a contractor's name, and his certificate of insurance for the work. After that is accomplished, the entire package would go to the board for final approval. Following that, we will need a building permit from the town of Wallingford. In summation, I think the plans accurately portray the substance of our request. I do have a couple of photos of an existing deck. If the Commission would like to take a look at that, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that the Commission may have.
Thank you very much, sir. Before I go to Commission members, Mr. Poggiini, any comments on the application?
I just wanted to remind them that the environmental planner did make comments that some of the decks do encroach on wetlands. So just before, if anybody does come in with an application, to check with her if it does impact the wetlands. Other than that, I don't have any major concerns with this.
Mr. Giuliano has outlined a number of decks that are potential decks that would require wetland approval, and those are clearly noted on the plans.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commission members with any questions for the applicant? I don't believe so. I think your certainly very comprehensive presentation. But this is a public hearing. Any members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward and name an address and your comments. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the applicant. If you'd like to make any further comments, you're certainly not obligated to. I think you had a very extensive-
Nope. I thank you for the opportunity, and hopefully your application with approval. Thank you.
Okay. At this point in time, there's no further comments from Commission members or the public or Mr. Poggiini. So I'd entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close a public hearing for application 406-22, special permit Dex Cheshire Crossing 2 HOA 1425 Tuttle Ave.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, now I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 406-22, Cheshire Crossing 2 HOA, special permit request for Cheshire Crossing 2 Homeowners Association 425 Tuttle Ave to increase deck sizes throughout an open space planned residential development, OSPRD. On plans entitled limited property boundary survey improvement location survey, existing decks, plan Cheshire Crossing, Unit 1 through 41 Wasworth Lane, and Zenia Court, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated June 23rd, 2022, with the three additions. One, comments from Scott Shipman, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer Division, dated August 29th, 2022. Two, inter-office memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated August 10th, 2022. And three, six copies of the approved final plans forward to the Planning and Zoning Office.
Thank you. We have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening. Brings us to our next order of business, which is a public hearing for possible action, including an opt-out from provisions of Public Act, Public Act Number 21-29, codified at Connecticut General Statutes Section 8-2D9 and 8-2P pertaining to residential parking requirements. And at this particular time, I will turn this over to Mr. Poggiini to go over this item.
So the first-
Excuse me. Before you do that, I'm sorry. I'm jumping the gun here. Mr. Allinson, would you please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A public hearing and possible action on, including an opt-out form, provisions of Public Act Number 21-29, codified at Connecticut General Statutes Section 8-2 subsection D9 and 8-2P pertaining to residential parking requirements. And we have the Public Act 21-29.
Oh, we have all these other things?
Oh. That's it, sir? Sorry about that. We have correspondence to the Lower Connecticut River Valley County Council of Governments, dated August 22nd, 2022. Correspondence from Kevin Poggiini to the Town Clerks of Cheshire, Durham, Hamden, Meriden, Middlefield, North Branford, and North Haven, dated August 10th, 2022. We have correspondence from the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments, date of receipt, August 25th, 2022. And correspondence from the South Central Regional Council of Governments, date of receipt, August 25th, 2022. Now I think that's it.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Allinson. And Mr. Poggiini, it's all yours.
Public Act 2129 related to residential parking requires that zoning must not require in excess of one space per studio or one-bedroom unit, or two spaces per unit for each dwelling unit with two or more bedrooms. And our current regulations do have some requirements that do require in excess of those numbers. So if we do not opt out, then this would take effect. That's essentially the entire portion of that.
How would our, I guess, Mr. Poggiini, at the present time, how would our requirements differ from this? And how would that, I guess, impact our-
It would just require less parking spaces for multifamily dwelling units. I don't have full numbers to go by, but as far as are certain are ones go now, we have required two and a half spaces per unit for a three or more bedroom unit. So the state requirements would only require two. So you're essentially looking at, if you have 30, 40 units, you're looking at another in excess of 20 more spaces, something like that. So we just would require more, and they want to do less. And I think in some aspects, it does save the developer money not having to build so many parking spaces. But at the same time, in our town, where we're kind of more of a suburban area, we may need that amount of parking. So really, I think it's up to us to discuss it potentially at a later time to see how this would really affect us if not. But I think potentially opting out now and then crafting our own regulations at a later time may be the way to go, just so these don't take effect over our current regulations.
Commission members with any comments or questions for Mr. Poggiini? Yes, Mr. Allinson?
Just one quick question. I know in some of our regs, we have a provision where an applicant can essentially buy extra spaces, you know, and trade. Would that be inter, if we did not opt out of this provision or of this public act, would that then be overridden by forcing a one-bedroom to have one space?
I believe that it only takes precedent if you require more. So if you're actually like could buy less, I don't believe it would. I know we have that just in the town center zone, so there are certain zones where... But again, this is sort of a public act, too, where Corporate Counsel said it didn't, she didn't really understand how it applied throughout the full nature of the zoning regs. So she thinks it would be in the best interest to opt out at this point just so you can look at the entirety of everything we require because we do require different parking in different areas of each zone. Some of the incentive housing zone requirements are different for dwelling units. And some of our, some of our main parking requirements in 611 differ from those. So it would override anything, though, that would be in excess, such as our parking requirements for multifamily dwelling units in 611. I'm not entirely sure of the full impact, though. I didn't really discuss that with her. But I think as far as opting out, it gives you the time to look at, you know, different areas of the zoning regs and why the state's requiring less and why we require so much. So I think opting out may be the best option at this point.
Thank you.
Other Commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, you know, I'm on record, I like a good parking spot. However, when I saw this come through and I was reading it, I'm still... I will support the position your office is taking that we opt out to buy ourselves some time.
Yes.
If I heard it correctly.
Yes.
My concern is how much time? Only because when we talk about non-market rate, not market, non-market rate housing and other areas and our desire to see more downtown development, I don't want parking to be an obstacle. So I'm just, it's unfair to ask, but I'll ask. I mean, are we talking we want to give ourselves a year or we want to give ourselves two years to figure out parking? Because we keep changing the parking. And I'm generally in favor of reduction, reduction, reduction. I understand why. This is a big deal for us because for us, compared to what we require today, which is what the state would then say we have to do. So opting out kind of protects us, but does it protect us for two years or five years or 10 years? What was your time horizon of when you thought we'd be revisiting this?
I think it would be good to discuss it within the next couple of months, only because we are working on the incentive housing zone, some of the town center applications. So, and I think some of our town center requirements actually align with some of these state requirements. It's just the, essentially, the 611 does require more than this would. So their initial goal is just to have less parking spaces, which is always, which is good, I think, in some cases, and may not work in other cases, so.
Not when you're looking for one. Yeah, I generally, Mr. Chairman and the town planner, I've been supportive of us opting out today, but would hope within a year, we would address how we're responding to this other than just simply saying we're opting out. As a tweak, I, you know-
Thank you. Other Commission members? Yes, Mr. Parent?
I'm in favor of opting out and staying opted out. Problem, I've lived in different areas with different parking requirements. And you can, you can end up in some really unfortunate circumstances when you find out that your park, what you thought was adequate parking was not. And so I think that as we go forward and we're looking at different developments and what they're proposing and what the requirements are, I think that you have to make sure that there's going to be a sufficient parking. In addition, what situation where people are staying home or returning home? And so what might, whereas maybe one and a half, say, in a situation, may be fine, not when you've got three people living in the house, all the cars. So I would say that I think that the parking requirements are fair and reasonable. It tends to ensure that every homeowner at least has a parking space on its property. And therefore, I just do not see a compelling reason for a change. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd also, I mean, I look at this and I think it's an advantage to the town to opt out from this because, I mean, this, we have different types of developments throughout the town, different areas, and I just don't think this one-size-fits-all is, you know, is something that would be appropriate or beneficial to the town. I do agree with Mr. Fitzsimmons. You know, I, you know, Mr. Poggiini, you indicated it was something, you know, we should look at. And I think clearly it should be, and probably should start looking at it at... We're looking at our incentive housing zone, our downtown, downtown district, our town center. Certainly that, when we start looking at it, considering changes to the parking, you know, that should be, you know, that should be, certainly should be considered. You know, especially in our, you know, in our town center. I know we've had discussions in the past as far as, you know, perhaps almost doing away with, you know, a parking requirement, whatever, in the town center. You know, I looked at that and felt very uncomfortable with that. But, you know, now that we seem we're getting some progress finally with some of our municipal parking lots, and hopefully those will be open to the public shortly, I think it's appropriate that certainly incentive housing zone and the town center, you know, we take a, take a look at our parking requirements and see what, you know, what may work, what may not work. So those are my comments. Any other Commission members? Jeff? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just a quick comment. You know, I'll save my editorial comments. You know, when something like this comes up, I always, you know, kind of wonder what the rationale is behind, you know, how this got enacted. And I'll just make that blanket statement and say that I do support our position of opting out.
With that, if there's no other comments from Commission members, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public that would like to comment on this particular application, please come forward. Second chance. Seeing none, at this point in time, if there's no further comments from Commission members from Mr. Poggiini, I would entertain a motion to close the, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close a public hearing for possible action, including an opt-out for provisions of the Public Act Number 21 through 29, codified at Connecticut General Assembly Statute Section 8-2D9 and 8-2P pertaining to residential parking requirements.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, I entertain now a motion on the, on this application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, let's see, make a motion that we formally opt out for provisions of Public Act Number 21-29, codified at Connecticut General Statutes Section 8-2D9 and 8-2P pertaining to residential parking requirements because it allows the town more time to thoroughly review the town regulations versus the Connecticut General Assembly statutes.
Do we have a motion, excuse me, do we have a second on the, on the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes. Moving on, it's a public hearing. Item number three, it's possible action, including an opt-out from provision of Public Act 21-29, codified at Connecticut General Statutes Section 8-0 pertaining to accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units. Again, Mr. Allinson, if you please read the legal notice and then note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A public hearing and possible action on, including an opt-out from provisions of Public Act Number 29-21-29, codified at Connecticut General Statutes Section 8-2O pertaining to accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units. We have the Public Act 21-29. We have correspondence from the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, dated August 22nd, 2022. We have correspondence to the Town Clerks of Cheshire, Durham, Hamden, Meriden, Middlefield, Branford, and North Haven, dated August 10th, 2022. Correspondence from Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments, date of receipt, August 25th, 2022. And correspondence from South Central Regional Council of Governments, date of receipt, August 25th, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Allinson. And Mr. Poggiini, again, if you'd please bring us up the data on this.
So this one relates to accessory dwelling units, or as we call them, accessory apartments. Right now, the state requirement, if those were to go into effect, would not restrict accessory apartments to homeowners or relatives of occupant of primary structure. Where that differs from ours is that we require that at least one of the occupants of the dwelling shall at all times be an owner of record. An owner shall be defined as someone who has at least one-half ownership interest in the property. So that one differs from our current regulations. The approval process shall not require a public hearing, special permit or special exception. We currently do not require a special permit or a special exception or a public hearing for accessory apartments, so that does not differ. Permission to construct an ADU shall not be conditional to correcting a non-conformity, meaning that, so that differs from ours because we only allow accessory apartments in residential zones. This may allow them in, say- This may allow them in, say, a nonconforming house in a commercial zone, and you wouldn't have to correct the nonconformity to construct an accessory dwelling unit. And would not require fire sprinklers if they are not required by the fire code, but we don't mention that. Regulations shall not require ADUs to have an exterior door be connected to the primary structure or have one, more than one parking space. We require that they are connected. This would allow detached, so that differs from our current regulations. The state regulations would allow a maximum size of at least 1,000 square feet or 30% of the size of the primary structure, whichever is smaller. Our current regulations allow for a maximum square footage of 780 square feet, so the state regulations would allow for a larger accessory apartment. Then some of these other requirements from the state don't really apply to us. It's just, they may not trigger more restrictive lot coverage requirements. We don't require that for accessory apartments right now. And they shall not be required to be served by separate utilities and shared septic systems and shall not be considered community wastewater system, so I don't believe our current regulations address that. We do require, just review by the Health Department. So there are some key points, such as the size differentials, the attached or detached nature of the accessory apartments, and the restriction to homeowners or relatives. So, you know, those, the state is trying to make it easier for accessory dwelling units in a lot of different places. So I think it's in our best interest to opt out and see if we want to take any of these ideas from the state regulations and see if we would like to make them applicable to our current regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Puccini. Commission members with any comments? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Never had a loss for words. I am generally in favor right now of opting out. However, the town planner, Mr. Puccini, just said it well. I do think there are pieces of this that we should, we should take. And I would specifically want to talk about the fact is, my understanding from following this, as, you know, in the local paper or others and reading it when it was happening and working its way through the Connecticut Legislature, it was geared, this act was geared more towards Fairfield County towns that don't allow anything like this. And Wallingford does. We do allow, and we talk a lot about accessory apartments, and we talk a lot about the size requirements. And I think it was local builder Bob Weiderman who raised it upstairs. We had a workshop. He talked about how the town of North Haven does it. I'm sitting there looking, I never knew that. I never knew in North Haven, you just apply, you fill out the paperwork, and it's approved. I like the idea of streamlining our process, but this, this Public Act pushes us too far. So, again, similar to my, the last supporting, the last, the last act we passed, I would hope that we could workshop this with the idea of, you know, and again, I think, you know, when Mr. Weiderman had mentioned how North Haven does it, I always like to know how other towns around us do it. I do think we allow a lot of accessory apartments. I know a lot of people like a larger accessory apartment, so that's why they end up going before the ZBA. I know sometimes we have issues with the separate entrances, but if we could streamline and revisit our regs as it pertains to this Public Act and how other towns do it, I think we, we would be more favorable to the people in town who want to do an accessory apartment. As I said, I generally don't, I'm not opposed to this regulation, knowing it's about affordability. It's about, you know, being able to allow people to add-on, add apartment, make things available, not just for family members. I just think my understanding of this legislation was it was not geared towards a town like Wallingford, which already allows a large number of affordable, excuse me, accessory apartments. It is the towns that currently don't allow anything like this. And so I can support the suggestion that we opt out today, but similar, I would hope that we could workshop this sooner than later because I do think elements of this are worth revisiting as it pertains to our regs. And specifically, as I said, I don't know enough about how North Haven does it, but it sounded, it sounded pretty good, the way Bob was explaining it. And a lot of it pertains to this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Simmons, other commission members? I would, you know, I would agree with Mr. Fitzsimmons. I think it's to our benefit to opt out of this, is I think, as he indicated, we have allowed accessory apartments in our regulations for certainly as long as I've been on the commission. You know, looking at some of these requirements here, I, I have issues with the detached part of it to, you know, allow the accessory apartment to be detached. Also, to a very large degree, the requirement that the homeowner does not have to live in, you know, live in the, in the structure, in the main structure, whether that's, if you have 100% ownership or, you know, 50% ownership to, you know, to eliminate that. One of the things that I think we should look at when we, when we talk about size, our current is what, 780?
780.
So it's 780 square feet. You know, here what's being proposed is, you know, 30% or 1,000 square feet, the lesser of. You know, I think increasing the size is something that we, you know, could or should consider doing. And that may prevent, in some cases, individuals from, you know, having to go to the, to the ZBA for, you know, for a variance. So that's, I think, something that, you know, we should, you know, we should look at. You know, having no exterior door, to me, if it's going to be an apartment, I think it should have an exterior door. But again, this is something that we should discuss and see how other commission members feel, you know, when we, you know, come to that. Also, you know, Mr. Fitzsimmons comments about, Mr. Weiderman's comments about a comment made. We'll get the comments going here. You know, I think that that's something we want to look at also as far as accessory apartments, because generally when they, when they come before us, you know, we look at the plans. We have maybe one or two quick questions about, is there enough parking? And then it's generally, you know, final, you know, approval is conditioned upon final inspection by our zoning enforcement officer. So, you know, to streamline that process to, you know, save members of the public perhaps time, having to come to a, you know, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting where at the end of the day they may say, gee, did I really have to come here? Because it could have been approved, you know, by, you know, by the planning officer in some other manner. So, you know, I would support at this particular point in time as far as, you know, as opting out and us, you know, looking at our, our accessory apartment regulations and making some adjustments to them. So if there's no more comments from the commission, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public who would like to speak on the application, please come forward. Still no? All right. Commission members, any final comments? Seeing none, Mr. Puccini, any final comments?
I just want to say that I think accessory apartments are great for aging in place as well, and with the demographic of our town, it's something that, you know, we should definitely look at from that aspect, too. So, but that's all I had to say.
Okay. So at this point in time, I've entertained a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for possible action, including an opt-out from provisions of Public Act number 21 through 29 codified at Connecticut General Statute Section 8-20 pertaining to accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? We have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And yes, no motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we formally opt out from provisions of Public Act number 21-29 codified at Connecticut General Statute Section 8-20 pertaining to accessories apartments or accessory dwelling units because it allows the town more time to thoroughly review its town regulations versus the Connecticut General statutes.
Do we have a motion on the application? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes. Moving on, Mr. Puccini, reports of officers and staff.
So you'll find the ZBA legal notice. There was no August meeting, so there is a large agenda for the September meeting. If you have any further questions regarding any of those applications, I can try to answer them.
Yeah, commission members, any questions? Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
If we could start at number one. This is the second time this, this variance request is on here, although I understand the first time they didn't, it didn't get heard. Was there a substantial change to the application? This is regarding Choate Rosemary Hall and the under, new construction, new admissions building with underground parking.
Yes, I believe they made some small changes. I think they moved it back a bit further and created also a memo that was supposed to go to the commission, but I don't know if they ever formally put that in, but I may have.
This commission?
Correct. But I don't know if you ever formally put it in.
I mean, I, to me, my comments would just reiterate our comments from the first meeting. That's all I would say.
If I'm correct, Mr. Puccini, the first variance request was a front yard of three feet, now it's, they're requesting 13 feet, and the requirement is still 40 feet.
Correct.
I, you know, unless, I have other questions on a couple other apps. I guess I would say, for the record, I feel the same I did last time. You know, only because with so much acreage they have, it is because of the pedestrian area and the pedestrian and the students, their students specifically crossing at that four-way intersection, which has higher traffic accidents and issues than most intersections town, I would, I would, you know, as a member of the commission, I would ask everybody to restate our objections, similar to the first one, but again, I'm just one person.
From my perspective, I agree with Mr. Fitzsimmons. I, you know, we, we discussed this at our, at our June meeting, July, I'm not sure which meeting it was, and I think we had, you know, fairly detailed discussion about this. Certainly, they made some adjustments, but I think the comments that, you know, we made and forwarded to the ZBA, at least in my mind, still stands. And again, I think as we all said at the, at the meeting, this is a decision for the ZBA to make. That's their purview, but these are our comments.
Right, okay.
Any other, yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
In addition, number two, is this the building, just a clarification of the 245, this is another Choate application for a smaller front yard at 245 North Main Street. Is that the old Victorian Inn?
Yes, yeah.
And the plan is to put the, the ramp and elevator in the front of the building? Which is why they're trying to reduce the, the front lawn?
Correct. I haven't had a chance to thoroughly look at that application because I believe it just came in, but it is definitely the Victorian Inn and it's the front yard.
Again, I, I, as far as commenting on this, I, I take the position in this one that it's, it's the ZBA. It's in their purview to make a determination on, you know, on this. I think this is a little bit different, at least in my mind, from the prior one that we discussed, and I would simply leave it in the hands of the ZBA. I'm not sure if other commission members would want to make any comments on this, or if we feel that we wanted to make some type of comment to the ZBA.
Mr. Chairman, I would prefer to make a comment to the ZBA, similar to the other one. The reduction in downtown front yard, I know they, if I understand correctly, they recently acquired the building, and I'm all for accessibility entrances, don't misunderstand, but it's a corner lot, you know, I, I'd hate to have them reduce their front yard, even though it's, it's within, you know, five feet. I would prefer that we send a letter to the ZBA.
Fair enough. Other commission members, how do they feel?
I would only say, number two, we don't know the full particulars of that one. They may actually have to do, from a construction perspective, it might be the only way. So that would be the only one I would say, I think that how they bring it before the ZBA is probably, they're going to have to say why, especially since it's the elevator, which I would assume it's ADA, so.
Right, because you've got the big stairs there.
Right. Not, not to disagree with the vice chair, I, I, I'm not as old as that building, but I remember when the building came in to become a B and B, so I do remember talking about the entrance requirements and front of the building, back of the building, side of the building, but I hear you, I hear you.
Mr. Allison, you're the, would be the final, I guess, determinant, how would, how do you like to handle this?
I think there's a middle ground. I think that we can send a letter and if, you know, and just stress that this is the least preferred area for accessibility to be placed on that property.
Okay, good enough. Mr. Puccini, I think Mr. Allison has provided you with some suggestions, some, some middle ground here.
Good words.
Any other?
Just to clarify, for the first one, do you want to send the same memo again, or would you like to go a little bit tougher this time, or?
I think what we, you know, what we sent the, what we sent the first time would be, you know, would be appropriate on the first one. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, continue.
I'm sorry. Number eight is a question to, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town planner. It's, this one's looking for an expansion of a nonconforming use slash building, and then in brackets in the, in the legal notice, it says, no expansion permitted to add a first and second story addition. So I'm thoroughly confused by that, that description.
That was a misrepresentation by the zoning enforcement officer. It was actually, because we allow existing residential uses in that district, it's not actually a nonconforming use, so she was just kind of confused, I think, but we, she told me she had put on the legal notice, and I said, you know, you can't retract it now, but it's, it's not an expansion of a nonconforming use because the, that district allows those existing residential uses to take place. So they're just looking for the setback because 100 feet is required in the WI district, which for that house would probably be nearly impossible to meet.
Right.
If that clarifies it, I did clarify that discussion with her, so.
Okay. Because that sentence, that statement kind of alarmed me, where it says, okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members? Seeing on, Mr. Puccini, moving on.
And then any questions on the zoning enforcement report? We did have a file closed today regarding a rooster in the Ridges, so that was a, that was a big, an ongoing one.
The rooster?
Correct.
Was it sold or eaten?
It was actually eaten. That was an ongoing complaint for, for years, so.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. One of the, the closed items, it's showing outside storage at 991 North Colony Road, Papale. What, I'm trying to think what property that is. Is that where the lobster tail is?
Which one was that?
It's, it's the one outside storage, it's the second one from the bottom. Outside storage. 991 North Colony Road.
I'm trying to think. Let me look that up. I'm not sure which one that is.
I guess what, just my, my question is, I, I know that if it's, it's the property that I thought, as far as the outside storage, I know that, you know, on that property, there was a dumpster, and then there was three, two 55-gallon drums sitting there, and it's still there, so I'm, I'm not sure if.
Yeah, she, she sent a letter out to them regarding that. Apparently, the food truck is still using the dumpster and the two barrels, but there are some other outside storage issues that.
Yeah, but that dumpster's just, just sitting, you know, right out on the open, and those barrels are just sitting right there. I mean, it's right at the end of the property. I mean, talk about an eyesore, it's ridiculous.
I had her look into it, so I don't know what the resolution was, but.
Yeah, I.
I guess it was stated that they're actually actively using it, so if we want to require maybe some screening for, for that stuff, I don't know how.
Well, yeah, I don't think they're using those barrels. I think those things have just been sitting there.
Yeah.
And the same thing with the dumpster. I, you know, I'd, candidly, I'd really question that, based upon where the, you know, where the vehicle is parked way on the other end of the property. These things have been sitting there forever, you know, forever. So, if they, at least in my mind, if they, they need, if, if they're being used, then they should be moved somewhere where it's a little bit closer to where the trailer's parked or where the, the building is, and it should be screened. Because I mean, right now, it's ridiculous. I mean, you talk about an eyesore, it's, come on.
Oh, yeah.
As Joe Biden would say, come on, man.
All right, I will have her follow up again on that.
President Biden.
Oh, yes, excuse me. President Biden, I'm sorry. I take it that takes us to the end of our, our agenda?
Any questions on administrative approvals?
Okay, I think we're at the end of our meeting. We've got, I think, just five more minutes before Low Deck Down Under starts, so at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close, or adjourn, the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.